Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council Meeting. It is 6 o'clock, March 17th. Councilman Kurt Wade has our prayer and our pledge, but for those of y'all who have been blinded by the light, clearly y'all can tell that Councilmember Wright is a huge UT fan. They did win by 25 points today, so Sean, looking good.
All right, Kurt.
I thought he was getting ready for Halloween. Let us pray. Father of heaven, we just thank you for this day. We just thank you for peace. Lord, we ask you to bless this country, bless all countries, but most of all bless us as we decide to make what's the future for the city of Murfreesboro. Give us the good grace and good deeds to do what's in the best interest of Murfreesboro, in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, I've got several different proclamations and we have some Stars or one proclamation and Stars Award, but I do want to make a quick comment for the staff that's here tonight. Many of y'all, the last Stars Award that we gave out, I was under the weather, overslept for the council meeting, grabbed a jacket without paying attention out of my closet to get here in time and go through the Stars Awards, get pictures made, and Ronnie leans over to me and says, "Hey, man, do you know you're wearing a tuxedo jacket?" And I look down, I'm like, "I'm not wearing..." I'll be dang, I am wearing a tuxedo jacket. So I want to go on the record tonight before I give this proclamation that I am not wearing a tuxedo jacket tonight, but anyway. All right, we'll move to our proclamation. Y'all want to come on up? I think this is our fourth or fifth year that we've done this, and so this, our group here from MTSU, you want to introduce everyone?
Sure, this is Tara, and she's a senior in our athletic training program. This is Kristi, and she's the clinical coordinator of our athletic training. This is Brad, and he's the Rutherford County School District Coordinator for Athletic Training for the county. This is Dez, he's a senior in our athletic training program, and this is Nick, and he's a senior in our athletic training program. And I'm Helen, I'm the program director.
Yeah, so we've had the honor for the last four or five years to be able to have MTSU here, and we have a proclamation, it's Athletic Training Month. Whereas National Athletic Training Month is held every March in order to spread awareness about all that athletic trainers do, athletic trainers have a long history of providing quality healthcare for athletes and those engaged in physical activity based on specific tasks, knowledge and skills acquired through their nationally regulated educational processes. And whereas the National Athletic Trainers Association represents and supports 43,000 members of the athletic training profession employed in professional sports, colleges and universities, high schools, clinics, hospitals, corporate and industrial settings, military branches, and whereas leading organizations concerned with athletic training and healthcare have joined together in a common desire to raise public awareness of the importance of the athletic training profession and to emphasize the importance of quality healthcare, and whereas such effort will improve healthcare for athletes and those engaged in physical activity and promote athletic trainers as health professionals. Now therefore, I shame McFarland, Mayor of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, on behalf of the entire city council to hereby proclaim the month of March as Athletic Training Month in the city of Murfreesboro and urge all of our citizens to learn more about the importance of athletic training. Congratulations. Although there's some exciting stuff that's coming up tonight, so you want to, we have two Stars Awards that we want to give out tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The purpose of the Stars Award is to recognize outstanding employees who embody the city's standards for service excellence and exemplify the city's core service values, which is to treat customers with respect and to provide outstanding customer service both internally and externally. Tonight, we will be presenting two Stars Awards, one for January and one for February. For the month of January, the recipient of the Stars Award is Ms. Maria Rowton. Maria is a permit technician in our Building and Codes Department. She's been employed with the city for almost three years. She has been an outstanding employee ever since joining the family. She is a very energetic and hardworking individual. She has great customer service skills and is a quick study. In fact, her department director, Mr. Robert Holtz, said the following, "Maria quickly learned how to issue every permit we process and is a big asset to the department and the city." Maria is receiving the Stars Award this evening because she demonstrates exemplary service in the form of cooperation, courtesy, responsiveness, support, and empathy. Webster's Dictionary defines empathy as "the ability to understand and share the feelings of another." This is who Maria is. One of Maria's coworkers, Ms. Precious Parham, wrote the following, "Maria is always willing to help her coworkers and customers at any time with a good attitude and a smiling face." You can tell that she genuinely cares for people, and she loves how she is so patient when a person comes in and needs assistance with language translation. She goes above and beyond to help others and to make sure they're okay. This is true even when she has a heavy workload herself. She is much deserving of this award. Maria, it brings joy to my heart to know that we have someone of your character working for the city, so on behalf of the city of Murfreesboro, thank you for providing excellent service to not only your coworkers but also to the citizens of this great city.
we were supposed to try to do it a couple of weeks ago, but I get to work with Maria on a daily basis, and she always returns emails, she's always thankful when she sends an email, and I think more importantly, it says so much that Katie Morris is here, Ryan Hardison, Philip Burns, Robert Holtz, her team at the Building and Codes Department are all here because I think they know what an asset she is, and not to mention that, I think you'll agree, the entire Building and Codes Department on how hard y'all work, we appreciate what y'all do, so thank you for coming tonight.
The February Stars Award recipient is awarded to Ms. Crystal Ellis McFerrin. Crystal has been with the city since 2017. She's a program coordinator at Patterson Park, and she has a passion for youth development and community outreach. Last month, during the after-school enrichment program snack time, Crystal noticed a nine-year-old child was choking and could not breathe. She immediately dropped what she was doing and quickly ran over to the child and administered the Heimlich maneuver. Thankfully, she was able to dislodge what was causing the young girl to choke and not be able to breathe, and the young girl was safe. This was a big relief for Crystal and everyone that was around. The child's grandmother was very grateful and appreciative for Crystal's quick response and for performing the Heimlich maneuver. Her supervisor, Derek Blake, said Crystal should be commended for her life-saving response. Crystal is a hero. Crystal, I want to personally thank you on behalf of the city for your quick response and heroic actions that saved this young lady's life. It's my honor to present this award to you.
Jim had a heart attack and a stroke about a month ago, and a month and a half ago, and so we don't have a Stars Award here for you, but I know a lot of us, we were praying for you and kept up with what's going on, but Jim, anyone who sees you around our city driving your Honda Element knows that you're going to take pictures and make sure that the good word of the people in Murfreesboro is out, especially with the things we have tonight, so I want to let you know, we're thankful for you, we're thankful for you being here, and we're thankful that you get to continue to be with us, so we appreciate you so much. Sure. Awesome. Well, we think so too, so thank you, Jim. We appreciate you. Every time we do these awards, I feel like that everything that happens after this is just a letdown and that we should cancel the meeting right then, so thank y'all for coming, and I, these are the highlights of our meeting, so thank y'all so much. All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. You have 14 items that are on your consent agenda.
Motion to second.
Motion to second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move into new business. On motion, you have a public right-of-way use license for Elam Farms Parkway by FedEx and Prologis. Religious.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm standing in for Trey Duke, Director of Schools. And shout out to Councilman Wright for his dress tonight. I wasn't hardly that bold, but. So we do have before us tonight a right-of-way use agreement between Prologis, FedEx, and the city of Murfreesboro. We have some unused right-of-way at the end of Elam Farms Parkway. Prologis owns two buildings, one on either side of the road. FedEx currently occupies one of those buildings for a local delivery operation, and they're currently working on finishing the regional ground hub that would be across the street. They approached the city staff about connecting those two facilities with a private driveway through public right-of-way. Although it is not crossing a public street, it would be use of the public right-of-way. Requires the approval of our mayor and council, and so our legal staff has drafted this agreement. The applicants or the Prologis and FedEx have agreed to remove the driveway upon notice by the city. Their thoughts are that any beneficial use of that private drive would help their business operation for the time that it would benefit them. We do have a 1,600-foot unbuilt portion of Elam Farms Parkway on our city's major transportation plan, and that would be for a future three-lane curb and gutter and sidewalk. We do not have a schedule or a timeframe or a specific project to do that, so staff recommends approval of the licensing agreement as presented in your packet. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Duke? I mean, Ms. Tuttleson. All right, we have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You now have item 17. This is a purchased property located at 2140 North Thompson Lane.
Mayor and council, we have been, in our CIP, scheduled to build a couple of buildings for departments who are in buildings who, that have far outlived its useful life, and one of them's in the path of redevelopment that we're actively pursuing right now. With the escalating costs of construction, we've, it's caused us to really rethink a few of our building plans in the short term and to look at other properties that perhaps are available. We've located a building that's highly suitable for two different departments to move into, and it offers a lot of advantages, one of which is it saves the city, right now, on the estimates between $10 to $12 million by purchasing the existing building as it stands and remodeling that for two departments, Parks and Fire Administration. So with council's approval, we'd like to enter into an agreement to purchase the two buildings, or the building for the two departments and begin our process for due diligence on that building before we close.
Discussion.
I'll just say a couple of things, you know, that the bigger picture of this, as far as those departments and where they currently reside, it's, for the men in the room, if you go to Chop House and you're headed towards the bathroom or in the bathroom, there's a picture of where the Fire Administration is. I was in there one night after eating dinner, and there's like some kind of 1943 car out front or 52 or whatever, it's so far ago, it's got big wings on the back of it, and I'm like, "We still use that building," you know, "and that's where they are," and of course, outgrown, and I'm like, "I think we're getting our useful life out of it," but, and then of course, the Parks and Rec Department in that house in Barfield, which was, you know, the rooms leaned like this eight years ago when I first visited, so. Great stuff too, from staff, I appreciate the getting creative and, you know, looking for different ways to do things in a tough building environment, and looks like saving, even if it's $6 million, half of what it could, you know, might be 10 or 12, but even if it's six or eight, big deal, appreciate it. And anybody else have comments, I'll let them, but.
Craig, I think it's important, and I think if the council weighs in, maybe this may be a workshop item that we talk about, but Ronnie sees it every day too, there's no telling based on the current environment what construction costs are going to be, I mean, I had, we were talking today about the MTSU Blue Build Program, about them, you know, trying to raise $100 million, and that probably is going to be $50 million short by the time that they get their bid back to be able to build. If we can find ways in our community that we can repurpose buildings that are already there, I mean, from the city's standpoint, it's a negative because we have to take them off the tax roll, so we've got a $2.2 million building that's coming off the tax roll, but we're saving realistically $10 million. Our economic development team, Mr. Whitaker, and if there's a way that we can continue to push people to redevelopment as opposed to building right now, I think that's important to bring things back to life in the community, so this is a great example of being able to do that.
I did have one quick question. What's the plan, it's not directly related to the purchase, but to repurpose or the existing site for the Parks and Rec building, what will you do there? Will we tear that down? Will we put other folks in the house?
No, it is, it's a residential property that is repurposed as an office, not a very good use over a long period of time, they're just not constructed to do that, and so more than likely, we'll visit different uses, potential uses from it. I would anticipate though, given the condition of the building, that we probably would remove it and use the land as part of Barfield Park.
Thank you.
Good question. All right, any questions?
If nothing else, so moved.
Second.
Motion to second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have the presentation of the annual audit report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for allowing us to be here. Mayor, you said there were some exciting things coming up, maybe this 215-page report was what you were talking about, right?
Absolutely. An accountant's dream.
It is a 215-page report, so I'm not gonna, not gonna hit every page, but just some of the highlights and get through it pretty quickly. As you know, we had a turnover in the city recorder's office, and I'd just like to say that Jennifer did a great job in getting through her first audit with us. She was very cooperative and helpful, and we appreciate all that support. So this report will be available on the website. I don't think it's posted just yet, but it will be available soon. The auditor's report, which is behind the tab that says Independent Auditor's Report there, is a clean or unmodified opinion. That would be the, what we would expect here in the city, and that is the standard this year. If you turn over to page four, there's about 20 pages here of what's called Management's Discussion and Analysis, and that is a good overview of the economic conditions, the financial activity, many other things that went on in the city during this fiscal year. So that's a good place to start if you just want to read a few pages about what happened during the city during this year. It was a pretty exciting fiscal year. The first day of the fiscal year was when the MED sale occurred, and that's reflected in here. If you go to page 23, this is called the Statement of Net Position. It's on a presentation called the Government-Wide Presentation. What that means is that all assets of the city are presented. That would be even buildings, infrastructure, all the liabilities, including bonds payable, are presented in this report, so it includes just everything that's owned and debt that are owed by the city. And if you look, one thing to note here, the note receivable in the first column that says governmental activities, note receivable $202 million, that's the note related to the Murfreesboro Electric sale, and that would be reflected there. One other thing to point out here, the total net position in the total column there, which represents total assets owned by the city, less debt owed. The total net position was $1.3 billion at the end of fiscal year, so that's a pretty strong statement there. Flipping on over to page 25, this is a presentation called the Funds Presentation, and really this just presents assets and liabilities that are available for the budget in the coming year, so it's more of a current view of what's available for the budget. And here's where we look at the fund balance for the general fund. You see in the first column there, the, down at the bottom, the unassigned fund balance is $93.8 million. That represents about 10 months of general fund expenditures, so that's a pretty strong statement in itself too. So in other words, if all revenue suddenly stopped, the city could operate for a full 10 months based on the fund balance that's there. The general fund itself is presented in comparison with its budget, starting on page 29, and that's very detailed, but it shows that expenditures were well within budget for the year, for the fiscal year, for the general fund. There's a tab called Notes to Financial Statements that's just after that, and there's quite a few pages of just descriptions about the city's debt, about pension plans that are available to employees, about different accounting policies and procedures, a lot of information And then if we go back to, there's a tab called Statistical Section toward the back. This gives a lot of information about 10-year trends that the city has had, and it shows a lot of growth that we've experienced in the city. It shows a lot of different information on tax collections, different sources of revenue and for a 10-year period, so that's good to show how we've come a long way in the last 10 years. For example, on page 175, this is the major tax revenues, and you'll see property taxes, for instance, have grown from 2012 of $36 million to the last fiscal year of almost $63 million, so there's quite a growth there. One interesting thing on this page, if you look at sales tax, in 2020, sales tax was $49.5 million, and last year it had grown to $58 million, so over that COVID spending, I think. And then just at the very back, the last tab, Single Audit Section, this gives a lot of information about federal money that was received by the city. And there's a summary of our audit on page 206. It basically says that we did express an unmodified opinion, a clean opinion. I will note that there are a few findings here, there were two at the city schools and two. of information about federal money that was received by the city. And there's a summary of our audit on page 206. It basically says that we did express an unmodified opinion, a clean opinion. I will note that there are a few findings here, there were two at the city schools and two involving the Community Development Department. We have spoken with management in detail in both of those departments, and they're already on their way to resolving all of those, so we're, we're satisfied that those will be corrected. Right. Said I would put it short, so that's.
Any questions for Mr. Joe?
I have one. On page 20, 25? When you were talking. When you were talking about the fund balance, the unassigned, you know, you were saying about 10 months?
Uh huh.
And if something came up, we have about two or three months of expenditures in here that we can continue to operate, right?
Ten, ten, almost 10 months.
I'm sorry, 10 months?
Uh huh.
Did this also include the 7% cost of living, Jennifer, that we approved? Is that new amount in there?
Mr. Job's numbers would be based on the expenses at the time of the audit, so this is based on the June 30, 2021 numbers.
Good numbers.
Yeah, this is a snapshot at the end of last fiscal year.
Thank you.
Wouldn't have included that.
Yeah, one thing that you can keep in mind though is that as long as that number grew more than 7%, we still gained, gained ground towards that, you know what I mean? Which it, it did. I had a couple of comments just as we were going through this, that just maybe you need to just be aware of in your team, just as going into this next year's audit frankly. So you can put this on the shelf till after April 15th, but it's probably something you wanted just to make sure you know. Number one, is Evergreen Cemetery, you may or may not be aware that we had a vote to separate them from the city, just so you know that, and however we need to deal with that, if you need to be aware of that, you are now. The other thing is that we have, the MED asset, the plan for that is that ultimately that, that note, basically, a big, you know, some large portion of that, I can't recall the spreadsheet, but we may need to get you a copy of that spreadsheet so that you know, you know, some of that, I guess, will be assigned to a trust. I don't really know whether that's considered an asset after that or whatever of the city, but we probably just need to get you involved in that to some degree if you're not already.
Right, right. And, and some portion of that is already assigned in this presentation too, so.
Gotcha.
It's, it's.
Okay, all right. It just came to my mind, I thought I might, we may want to make you apprised of it, okay?
Yes.
All right, any other questions? Mr. Joe, I know you have a team that works really hard, would you like to introduce your team? I know, we, we've seen their faces over the, over the years.
I've got Suzanne Vandiver and Molly Patricus, and they have been with me longer than they want me to admit, so. They are absolutely some of the best in the state, and I truly believe that. They, they are fantastic auditors, so you're in good hands.
Thank y'all so much for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to Rutherford Boulevard Extension, and this is a professional services agreement from the Engineering Department. Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. This is the, a design contract with Neil Schaefer for the first of three, three new bridges that were out, was outlined in the 2040 major thoroughfare plan that would be an, an advantage for the, for the city to add. Staff requested the proposal from Neil Schaefer for preliminary and final design for the extension of West Rutherford Boulevard. We've included a, a map with your, with your packet, shows about .77 miles over I-24, and then another .25 miles of Rutledge Way extending to the north. This extension would be a three-lane curb and gutter section with sidewalk and a multi-use trail. The cost of these services is proposed for 716,739 dollars and is funded in the FY21 and 22 CIP budget. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
It's a three-lane, is the three lanes, the bridge over?
Yes, it's, it's, it's actually designed that we could, we could widen it to four at some point if we wanted to kind of narrow some of the, the outside of it.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's good.
Trying to do that now with, with most of our three-lane bridges, just, there's not much need for a turn lane with them, so we can, we can widen them in the future if we need to.
What about walking path? Were you thinking about that, or is that not?
It, it does, it actually has sidewalks and a multi-use trail. We're gonna try to use this as a connection, you know, where eventually this will go on over to Mill Tennessee Boulevard, and, and of course it has back and sidewalks on it as well. Oh, actually, I'll bring another contract to you here, and that we just started negotiations with it, with another firm for the, for the improvements to Rutledge, also all the way to Mill Tennessee Boulevard. I apologize, I meant to, to bring that up as part of our discussion.
I like it. I'll move for approval.
Second. Motion in a second, Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We do need to back up, I realize the audit was presented, but we need to formally accept the audit if we can get a motion to accept the audit.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second, Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We now have a final change order for Rucker Lane Phase 1.
Yes, Mayor, we've completed Rucker Lane Phase 1 project, it was completed the first of the year, and happy to, to say the construction cost actually decreased for the project by 122,597 dollars, thanks to the effort primarily from our construction team, Mike Stacy and Mr. Scott Elliott here in the audience with us. So these funds will actually be returned to the 2018 CIP budget. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
This one's easy.
I'll move for approval on that one.
This one's easy. This one's easy.
Motion in a second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We have a professional services contract for the Butler Drive realignment.
Mr. Mayor, the final item tonight is the approval for a contract with Kimbley Horn for the Butler Drive realignment in the amount of 92,100 dollars. I'll, I'll say this is only for the survey and for the legal descriptions, we've actually have some redevelopment that's happening in the area, and we'd like to, I guess, kind of stake our claim to the, to the land that we need in, in that area as part of that redevelopment. Included in their proposal is, is a sketch of the proposed alignment, it'll actually draw the intersection there of, of Butler away from the interchange, try to give us a little bit more separation so we can, we can signalize that in the, in the future. The cost of the work, like as I mentioned, 92,100 dollars, is, funding is provided from excess, excess funds that were captured in this FY16 and 21 CIP budgets. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Chris, let me ask a question, and I may not be able to answer it now, but when we abandoned Butler, the existing Butler Drive, what, what are we, what are we doing with it?
Well, there's some property, or some, some businesses and some properties in that area, we may actually have to, we're still negotiating that out, but we may actually have to kind of keep it as kind of a driveway for them.
Okay.
So that's, if not, I can tell you how typical right-of-way abandonment goes, is we just abandon it half to each property owner, and if there was any payment made for it, then we'll actually sell it to them. This one, that section of Butler, I'd have to check, may actually have been part of T-Dot's original work in that area, so it may actually be state right-of-way anyways. I'm getting a thumbs up from Mr. Huddleston, so yeah, that's part of T-Dot's, T-Dot's right-of-way.
Any questions?
So moved.
Motion in a second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Griffith.
Thank you.
All right, we have the city schools roofing.
It's, Mayor, this, this is gonna be presented by Scott Elliott. Most, many of you may know Scott, he's been with the city for quite some time, we stole him from Chris, brought him down for, as our project manager to handle vertical construction projects that we're involved with, so this is Scott's initial presentation.
First time.
He's jazzed to do it.
I just want to say hello, Mayor, members of the council, I'm here tonight to present to you the consideration and approval for the contracts for the roofing of four city schools. These buildings have been required by city statute to be evaluated by an architect. Johnson and Bailey Architects was selected for their professional services to evaluate, estimate, and prepare this project for construction. The total cost for these projects is 2,90536 dollars. The funding for these projects will come from city-county bond funds. Phase 1 is for Milton Nelson and Reeves Rogers Elementary School. This project has been out, bid, bid out, and Porter Roofing is the lowest bid, the bid price for this first phase is 1,989,000 dollars, 1,989,789 dollars. The phase 2 is Hopgood and Bradley Elementary Schools. This project has also been bid out, and Marion Green Roofing is the lowest bid. The bid price for this project is 840,000 dollars and 80 cents, or 80, 80 dollars. Professional service for these fees are 63,659 dollars. Due to the increasing construction demands and material and fuel costs, the construction projects of today have encountered higher bids than normal. These projects are desperately needed to maintain our public schools, and I just want to thank you for your time and consideration for the approval of these projects. Y'all have any questions at this time?
Any questions for Mr. Elliott?
No questions, a move for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate your hard work. All right, we'll move to HVAC unit replacement for water resources.
Mayor, council, thank you. When I first saw this item on the regular agenda, I was a little bit surprised. Then I kind of got into Craig's head a little bit, and we're such on the same length, I figured he really was signaling, he wanted me to do a, a little bit more in-depth discussion about HVAC. So we have a brief history of eating ventilation and air conditioning, HVAC, and with a little icing on the cake, some basic thermodynamic review involving the vapor compression cycle for refrigeration. So if you guys just buckle up, we'll, we'll get into this little presentation right now.
You thought the, you thought the audit was good.
All right, that was my, that was my joking intro. Anyway, this is a, I won't go into all that, I just thought I'd give a little guff today. Anyway, this is the Facilities Management Department, did do a citywide analysis back in 2019, and a lot of the HVAC units needed to have their R22, R22 refrigerants no longer being produced. So for FY22, the water plant has three air handling units, a heater unit, pump house unit, a computer room unit. Those are budgeted for 134,783 dollars. We do have a, a proposal from Train Incorporated for 120,150, so we would recommend approving that contract. I'm available for questions if you have any.
So moved.
Motion, we have a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you. All right. Thanks, Darren. All right, we have a couple of bill, or beer permits in front of you. Ms. Brown?
We have a new location for a family entertainment venue at 1952 Old Fort Parkway, Suite 6. The applicant there has met requirements for a beer permit, and staff recommends approval upon pending final building and codes inspections. And the special event permit is for an event for Charity Circle of Murfreesboro, and that applicant has also met requirements and is recommended for approval.
Any questions?
Starting on a move for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We don't have any board and commission appointments, any statements to be paid?
No, sir.
Any other business from staff? I think we've got a proposal for Construction Materials Engineering and Testing Services from TTL. Is there someone gonna present that? All right.
Default to Sam.
Sam, are you gonna present that?
Oh, it was on consent, okay. It's just backed up for consent.
Okay, all right.
It's materials for consent.
Any other business from staff?
I can clarify that what you have before you is a corrected version of what was in the actual consent agenda.
Okay. Do we need to, I assume what we voted on was this amended?
Yes.
Version?
Yes.
All right. Any other business from council? All right, seeing none, we'll stand adjourned.